All right, it is six P M. right now. Let me know when I'm ready. My life? Okay. Today is Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It is now six P M. And this is a special commission meeting and a public hearing for the final budget submittal for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This meeting is now called to order. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, the pledge of allegiance. We'll be doing the invocation for the next, for that, for the next meeting. Deputy Chief, we have the invocation for the next part of the meeting, so I'll call you back up. It's not on this agenda. Hi, thank you. I just saw it now, too. Roll call.
Yes, item two, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Junior.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have call.
Thank you. Next item.
Item three, public comments.
Anyone for public comments? Seeing none. Next item.
Item four, special agenda items. It is my understanding that some items will be deferred, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, which ones?
Would you like to please? Let us know which first.
Mayor, I'm asking for a, for a deferral for four A, which is the ordinance on, on, on the commercial vehicles.
Okay.
A deferral on four C, which is a, a, they, the building permit fees. And I'm also asking for deferral on four D, which is for water meters until the next meeting, sir.
Okay, no problem. Can we read the first item on the agenda with the withdrawals?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item four B, this is an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, adding Article Three, Section Four dash twenty-seven, one dash ten, water conservation for landscape irrigation, providing for local implementation of the mandatory year-round landscape irrigation conservation measures. Rule of the South Florida Water Management District, four E dash twenty-four, providing definitions, providing for landscape irrigation schedule, providing exceptions to the landscape irrigation schedule, providing for a requirement to operate technology that inhibits or interrupts an irrigation system during periods of sufficient moisture, providing for variances of the specific day of the week, limitations, providing for penalties for violations, providing for codification, conflict separability, and providing an effective date.
This is the first reading?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have motion?
Second.
You have a second. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Next item. Item D. C, D, E, item E. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative agreement with Miami-Dade County, a political subdivision of the state of Florida, relating to citywide trash being purchased pursuant to request for proposal zero zero two five four to Red Wing Pacific Company in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and zero cents to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act.
So this item is, is a very exciting phrase. This is the first of implementation phase of the budget that we will hopefully pass tonight, even though the funding source isn't dependent on the budget. This is for the larger trash bins that would, with the wheels that will increase, they'll improve our trash service tremendously, especially for families of more than two that have, you know, a much harder time with our, our small bins. As part of that, our Public Works sanitation crew will actually be helped as well because they won't have to carry those, those bins that can get very heavy. It would, it would ease their work as well with new crane function on the, on the truck. So this is very exciting. I think this is going to be a big improvement, residents have been asking for this for quite a while. They don't necessarily want the county's service, but they want what the county's equipment is. And we're going to be getting that with this, this allocation. In terms of the color, me and the manager have been talking. We're, we're deciding between, I think the current, what is it, dark blue? Is it dark blue?
Yeah, the color is entirely up to you. We can, dark blue, dark green. And it's not going to have the logo, but it will have the branding of City of West Miami.
Right, so it's going to have a little City West Miami in cursive, very clean, very elegant. And we're, we're deciding, which we'll, we'll talk about after the allocation, between a dark blue or a very dark green.
That really is better.
To, yeah, so we, we, we'll decide that with administration after the allocation. But do we have a comments, concerns, or motions on this item?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I spoke about this issue with the city manager in regards to the, the composition of the, of the bin, you know, it has to be very sturdy. He advised me that it's, it's just as sturdy and just as good as the recycling bins. Those recycling bins are pretty tough. They're pretty rugged. You know, I've had mine now for I don't know how many years and, and it gets abused and it's still there. So, so if it's that same quality?
Yeah.
I think, I think that it will, they will last many, many years to come.
Yeah, one of, one of the additional benefits is, I'm sure we've all seen when we cross the streets, it's just a natural, there's no other way to do it, no matter how gently our sanitation crew puts it down. The wind comes and the lids blow out and all of a sudden the lids are gone and now, you know, the trash comes over here, the lids over here. It's just, it's just a bad look. That it can be really, just really solved by, by this investment as well. So it's not only sanitation, it's not only the actual function, especially for, for families and for, and for our seniors, who, by the way, you know, because of the wheels actually are, are helped a lot. But also as an elegance, as, you know, where it's, it's a uniform, you know, elegance, where you, you don't have these lids and cans going everywhere with the wind. But, um.
Also would be a prestigious thing, you know, the big bin and the top, because that's what happen. You know, the tops go with the wind and then you see the bucket here, the top over there, you know. So we have a uniformity in the city and then the residents will touch something with the seal of the city. I think it's a good idea. I think most of the good cities have that.
Yes.
And I think we are a small body. If we can do a prestigious thing, we do it.
Excellent point, Commissioner.
I thi- I think that that lid's going to help as far as keeping water, rainwater, going into the garbage and mixing with the, with the refuse. A lot of times the liquids get mixed with the refuse and they go on the garbage truck. And eventually, you know, it, it, I don't know if, I don't think there's a bin that would, that catches all, that catches all that liquid, but it ends up being spilled throughout the city. And I, I've, I've seen that happen dozens of times and we gotten some, I've gotten some complaints about it because of the smell. And, you know, it will take a couple of hard rains for it to, to wash away. So, so hopefully that will help in that respect. You know, I, I, I've always felt that, you know, the, the other cans, the other bins that we have, that the, the residents should use the lids, but they never do. They never do, so.
A lot of them lose them and, and, you know, there's a, there's a good friend in Hialeah who, you know, he's an activist down there and, and he would have, I think, I think you know who he is.
Tell you.
You would have the lids for residents because you can't buy the lids at Home Depot like that just alone. So it's a, it's a real thing.
Residents will appreciate that.
Let's not mix Hialeah with West Miami.
But, uh, well, I won't tell Mayor Bobo there. The, let's, can we get a motion on this item or any additional? We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item F, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, waiving the competitive bid provisions as provided in Article Four, Florida, waiving Section two seven four A and B of the City of West Miami Code of Ordinances, accepting the recommendation of the city manager affirming the purchase of a medium duty of medium duty and company construction equipment with related attachments, accessories and supplies for JCP Inc. as better described in the attached Exhibit A, in an amount not to exceed, exceed ninety-nine thousand two hundred seventy-seven and zero cents under the terms and conditionals, conditions of Sourcewell and Minnesota Local Government Unit under the terms and conditions of Sourcewell Request for Proposal Contract Number zero four zero three nineteen to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, providing for an effective date.
This, Mr. Manager, you want to take this?
This is a front-end loader that we need desperately in the back that we've actually rented in the past. This is a buyer-owned. We're using, we're using against ARPA money for this. It's part of what we are proposing for next year's budget. We're getting a little ahead of ourselves since the ARPA money is there, there now. Sourcewell is a competitive organization that bids out for a lot of governments around town. There's a little bit of discrepancies, so we're basically, we're relying on Sourcewell, but we're saying it's a single-source provider just to, just to make sure that we stay within the legal approval of our city attorney. But this is a big deal because for a very, very long time, we've had either rental equipment or equipment that has been falling apart in the back. And it's, and we're trying to make our staff, our Public Works people be able to work with the right tools in the right places. And this is why we're requesting this.
Absolutely. We have to give our, our employees tools to do their jobs. Does anyone have any questions for the manager? Commissioner Suarez and then Commissioner Chavez.
This is a federal money, this is federal money, right?
ARPA is American.
American Rescue Plan?
Yes, sir.
It's a federal government.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it's not the, our, I mean, our residents' money. This, we don't, it's, it's, it's a, it's a federal, it's a federal money came to the city to spend these things.
Commissioner, thank you for letting me clarify that and explain that. Yes, ARPA money is a federal grant that they gave out for COVID. Our, our share of that was four point three million dollars. And as I stated in the last budget hearing, we have until December of ninth of twenty twenty-four to expend that money. We have spent very little of it. And it's basically expanded for us to be able to use it for a myriad of, of issues such as this. And this is one of the reasons why we did it. It's not coming from our taxpayers. It is coming from the federal grant, which is called the American Relief Act. Thank you.
Commissioner Chavez?
Mr. Manager, the front-end loader, this is what we use for the bulk pickups. So this is another item that, just like the previous one, as the mayor touched on, our Public Works Division or Department, they work extremely hard. It's backbreaking work. And this, along with the garbage bins, will help to alleviate that. And I'm all for that.
Better service. Better equipment, better service.
And better working conditions.
And better working conditions, very important. Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call the rule.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote? Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item G, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, approving the Title VI Non-Discrimination Program Plan Policy, updated September twenty twenty-three for the purpose of ensuring compliance with Title VI Non-Discrimination Efforts of the Civil Rights Act pursuant to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the Civil Rights Restoration Act of nineteen eighty-seven, and non-discrimination requirements implemented by Title IV CFR Code of Federal Regulations, Part Seven Non-Discrimination in Programs or Activities Receiving Federal Assistance from the Environmental Protection Agency, approving the Associated Limited English Proficiency Plan updated in September twenty twenty-three to ensure compliance with the Executive Order one three one six six and further authorizing the city manager to make public in a prominent location set non-discrimination policy and procedure of grievance and providing for an effective date.
This seems like housekeeping, but explain it, Mr. Manager.
It, it is housekeeping. Mayor, this is really related directly to the EPA federal grant that you went to Washington, D.C. and obtained for the city of three billion dollars. Our, our language was from twenty, twenty fourteen. Since then, they revised their language, so this is just to make sure that our language is compliant with the federal requirements and rules so that we can go forward with that grant and make sure that our language is in compliance with all guidelines.
Beautiful. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item.
Item H, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, relating to safety shoes and boots purchased with BF Business DBA Red Wing Shoes for participating employees, authorizing the city manager to piggyback onto the Miami-Dade County, Florida Contract Number FB zero one thirty to benefit from a fixed percentage of the manufacturer's suggested retail price and further authorizing the city manager to approve expenditure of funds in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars and providing for an effective date.
So I know that, I've spoken to quite a few employees who are very excited about this. So we want to, we want to explain this, Mr. Manager?
This is a fifty-fifty match grant where we've already expended our six thousand dollars in buying safety shoes for all our employees. Again, the theme of the night seems to be making sure that our employees have the right tools to work with, how they need to safely. So we're buying protected shoes for our employees. And this is really to authorize us to go after the other fifty percent match for the grant. So we, we were, we were able to bring out a bus here with all the shoes. Our employees picked their shoes that they needed to do their job. And it's basically costing us fifty percent of what it usually would cost. And our employees now have the protective shoe where they need to do their jobs.
Anyone have any questions for the manager on this?
No, no questions. I, I have something experiencey about this. Because I remember when the company from the New York, General Bronson Corporation, came to Medway in the sixties. And the people, they, they, that company made the windows of the Empire State Building, made the window of the Capitol Havana. It was over a hundred years old company. Check General Bronson Corporation, go in the computer. And when they opened this, they came from New York because they had a problem with the unions. So they opened a factory here in Medway, the first one, big building there in those days. And one of the things they advised to the people who work in the, in the sewing and heavy equipment was to have steel in the front of the shoes to protect the fingers. So if something go on top of your, your feet, to protect your feet. And that was, I learned that many years ago. So that's a very good thing.
Working conditions is the theme of the night.
Many, I tell you, I told you the story. The father, Alex Panella, wasn't working in the stockroom. And the father of Julio Rubaina, the former mayor of Hialeah, Julio's father, was working with me. I was inspector there.
So you, you want to make the motion?
I made a motion for the shoes, yes.
We have a motion and a second. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item I, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, requesting to reschedule the regular city planning and zoning meetings held at the fourth Tuesday of every month at seven thirty P M. to every last Wednesday of every month at six thirty P M., providing for an effective date.
I'm assuming this has been kind of vetted with the members of the board?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have an issue with this? This is not really having anything to do with us. So it's been vetted by the board members and it works with their schedules. I don't think it should be a problem.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Call the rule.
I apologize. We made the second.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Blanes.
Vice Mayor Blanes, okay.
We can do it all a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, item passes. Thank you.
All right. Now for the public hearing. These are all public hearing items, correct? Open the public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. This is the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Item J, please.
Submission of the final city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four by city manager.
For yours.
Good evening. I have a very quick slide presentation like we did last time. And we'll start again where our, our theme is back to the basics. Why are we saying we're going back to the basics? Because when our city of West Miami was incorporated in nineteen forty-seven, the ideals of our forefathers was to create a very high standard of living, that we, they wanted good parks and green spaces. And we wanted local control of our police sanitation and zoning. And I think we have accomplished that. Recapping what's happening in the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, it's been also a year of change. We have three retirees that have happened in our city, starting with our finance director, Mercedes Leon, who's here, which is very instrumental in us putting forth together this budget that you have in front of you today, our former city manager, Yolanda Aguilar, and our director of Public Works, Juan Pennam. We want to thank them for all their times and hard efforts throughout their years of serving our city of West Miami. Again, starting, keeping on the theme of the year of change, it's important to note in the last couple of years, we have seen a thirty percent drop in crime two years ago and a twelve point two percent drop currently this year. Our eleven percent drop in our millage rate, and I am pleased to announce that we're going to be bringing in a, a millage proposal at five point nine five, which is a true reduction. We're going back further than rollback. Rollback would have been five point nine nine two eight. And then here's a really good graphic that shows what we've been able to do with our millage rate since the year of twenty twenty-one, where we're at six point eight eight five eight and where we have gradually continues, continued to reduce it. This year, at the first budget hearing, we had proposed six point two five, which is what the commission approved. However, during that meeting, you all asked me to make sure that I could lower it even further. And we had proposed a rate, which is rollback, of five point nine nine two eight in further conversations with the mayor, making sure that we did not, that it did not come at the expense of our services or employees. He asked me to see if I could look at squeezing a little bit more out of it. He's a hard negotiator, twisted my arms, and we were able to drop it down to five point nine five, which is what we are proposing today. Recapping the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we have added staff where we've needed it. We've been able to add communications. I'm sure most of our residents are starting to see the social media presence and starting to see some of the stuff that we're putting out there. One of the things that makes a community are special events, and we are, we have ramped that up considerably. We have been able to add procurement. We need procurement because we are going to be going through a lot of the ARPA money this year. And we need to make sure that we have that done in a proper fashion where it does not come back to haunt us. We've added new facility maintenances. We are combining Parks and Rec in our community center. And I have added a chief of staff to our, to our administration side. Again, reminding this council, one of the very first things I did when I was hired in May is that we, we set up and followed the GFOA, Government Financial Officers Association's guidelines for putting away our reserves into lock boxes so that we never face a financial crisis in the future. Their recommendation from GFOA is seventeen percent of your general funds should be locked boxed, locked boxed away. We are exceeding that. We're putting twenty-five percent of it away. Plus, we are also doing some other items such as community growth at quarter of a million dollars, litigation reserve, asset, asset depreciations, declared emergencies. And then at the end, we have unrestricted funds, which are unallocated and can be used for a myriad of issues that we would like to use as a city. Recapping the budget further, it's important that our residents note that out of every dollar that they pay in taxes, twenty-nine cents is what comes to the city of West Miami. Sixty-seven cents goes to either the countywide efforts and/or the public school. So basically, one-third of every dollar is what comes back to the city of West Miami for us to be able to provide all the services that we provide for our residents every single day. Recapping at some of the administration and, and council's goals is to accept the responsibilities to take on all the important tasks and projects, to value every resident, to encourage diversity and tolerance, provide quality in our public services every single day, provide principled leadership, honest, responsive governance, and transparency in all of our actions. Our city challenges are, first of all, our Public Works Department is ongoing through a unionization process. And we have had very amicable negotiations with them. We need to continue to find funding for our freebie ride-sharing services. We want to add post-off, post office services and P O. boxes to our passport division. We want to improve our traffic. We are working very closely with Miami-Dade County's Public Transit, Transit Department on providing a traffic circle on Southwest Sixteenth and Sixty-second Avenue. We need, we can, we will continue to find and look for funding for our seniors' meals programs. And lastly, we're combining Parks and Rec with the community center. Some other recaps is, we have announced a Safe Street Initiative with bicycle patrols, and I'm sure you've all seen some of the videos on that. We tonight took the very first step in our Clean Street Initiative in the sanitation departments by approving at first reading the new, the new trash bins. And we will be bringing back for some retrofits for the sanitation trucks so they can pick them up, which will make our sanitation departments work a lot easier. We have reorganized our staff to better align our services and provide transparency for all of our residents. And we will be announcing an upcoming apps to request services from our residents in the future that will be responded to. We're also proposing in a new budget, as you all know, a new dog park, a new senior activity center. We are providing cost of living increases for employees plus merit. We have added, we are, we will be adding mid-year one officer to our police force. We will be, begin the process of becoming an age-friendly community. And there will be some new fees that we'll be discussing in October on commercial entities for sanitation, for stormwater, for building and occupational licenses. With that, I close out my budget. I'm here to answer any and all questions on our budget. Again, my proposal is a little bit different than what's been shown. We are proposing five point nine five instead of the five point nine nine two eight. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Okay, so everyone have any questions or comments for the manager? Mr. Mayor?
So up here on the commission, we are stewards of the, our residents' tax dollars, right? So our jobs are to figure out what best ways to implement services and increase public safety with said tax dollars. But anytime that we have the opportunity to give some of that money back to our residents, especially in a time such as the time we're living in now, where some, a lot of our residents are going through, through hard times, I'm all in favor of that. So if the manager is saying that in his opinion, we can lower the rate to a five point nine five, I'm all on board. We are increasing a lot of services, bringing a lot of amenities, giving staff increases that they very much deserve, especially after seeing the budget that they put together. Did a fantastic job with that. So I'm in on the five point nine five.
Beautiful. We haven't got to the resolution yet, but I would like to say that, you know, first of all, thank the manager. And I know Ms. Leon worked very hard on this budget. I know it's your final budget, so we're very proud that you're leaving on a bang because this budget is fantastic. This, this budget addresses almost every issue, almost every issue that residents have brought up for probably thirty years now. There's a lot of drainage improvements. There's a lot of traffic improvements. A lot of the, the things that really impact day-to-day life of residents. It's been a collaborative effort where we looked for innovative ways to do kind of what I promised when I, when I took this office, which was to solve issues, to beautify the city, to improve services, and to lower taxes. And I think people thought that that was a crazy concept to do both at the same time. But with so much inflation, like you mentioned, and home insurance increases and every other tax bill on the residents' bill going up, you know, I'm proud that ours is going down. I know last year it was four point, four point three percent decrease. Now it's eleven percent decrease, which is below rollback, which for anyone who knows, doesn't know what that means, it means that whatever the highest increase valuation, regardless of homestead, our, our decrease actually is lower, reduces the millage to, for a point where it's actually lower paid in dollars than, than your increase could possibly be. So, and that's the lowest tax rate in this city for over thirty years. So very proud of that. Now we move forward into execution and implementation, which is more fun because you get to see the fruits of the labors of the budget coming into, into play. And it's exciting and, and promising to be a resident or an owner in this city right now. And like I tell every resident, you know, the next six months to a year, uh, if you don't see, if you, if you haven't seen already, but if you don't see the real fundamental difference in services, beautification, uh, et cetera, um, then, you know, then you have to be crazy or we didn't do our jobs. So, but I feel that, I feel that the team has put together an execution plan already that I've seen, uh, that we've already started today with, with our, our sanitation service. And, um, this budget is, is kind of the coming out party for, for this city, because this, this is funding a lot of incredible things that, that will come to play. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who had a role in this budget. I thank the commission for their collaboration and support on, on this budget. And, uh, let's head into item K.
Yes, item K, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, establishing the twenty twenty-three final millage rates upon all real and personal property within the city limits for the payment of the amount appropriated in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final budget.
I need a motion with a amendment to five point nine five.
I'll make that motion with the amendment of a millage of five point nine five.
Motion as amended. Do we have a second? Motion and second as amended. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item L, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final budget.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
We have a second. Call the rule.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Item M, yes, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, adopting the final Water Enterprise Fund Budget for the year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the sum of eleven million, one hundred thirty thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Blanes, then? I'm sorry, I, no, no, but yes, I kind of lost my order.
Yes, I see, yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes and Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
City clerk, if I may though, that number has to be reduced by thirty-six thousand, sorry, I took my glasses off. That number has to be reduced by thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents to match the five point nine five millage rate.
Let's, um, okay, read out the total number and we'll, we'll take a motion and a second and a vote all in favor to make that amendment, okay? Um, so we, we read out the total number on the resolution?
Yes, thirty-six thousand, four hundred?
It, the eleven million dollar and change that you just said has to be reduced by thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
So do some quick math here.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's water. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. I'm talking about the general go- general one. I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right.
Sorry about that, my bad.
So we're good there?
You're good, you're good.
Okay, perfect.
So remains, the vote remains.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
I just want to clarification, something. Did you explain to the residents that last year we paid six point twenty-five percent? Now we're paying five point ninety-five?
Actually, last year, we were paying more.
So we reduced the taxes.
We were paying, last year, we were paying six point five eight nine seven. Earlier this year, we, we, our first millage rate was six point two five. So, but when I took office, we were paying six point eight eight five eight and now we're paying five point nine five.
I want you explaining and, and repeat to the people because, you know, it's good the people is looking for lower taxes.
Yeah, and.
We have to be aware, they know.
Yeah, well, the, the, the tax, the tax, the taxes lowering, the taxes lowering, uh, from last year's rate, eleven percent.
Yeah.
Um, that's following a four point, four point three percent decrease. And, and again, um, what that means is both years, you pay an actual dollar amount less. Um, especially if you're a homestead resident, it's a significant savings. And, um, and, you know, it's, again, it's significant because every other, every other government will, you, you know, your tax bill will be going up for every other government on that, on your bill. And, uh, and, and don't get me started about home insurance, et cetera. Um, so this is significant.